We'll try to get everyone's ready, so we'll call the meeting to order. We'll start discussing that there was an executive session on a matter of personnel with no action tonight at 6:30 PM. We went over a little bit of schedule, so we started the meeting here a little late. Thank you for your patience. We'll have the Friday ladies.
President Miller.
Here.
Vice President Eaton.
Here.
Councilman Aderson.
Here.
Councilman Eager.
Here.
Councilman Remar.
Here.
Councilman O'Neill.
Here.
Mayor Irvin.
Here.
Solicitor Bobby.
Here.
I'm sorry, not a firm.
Here.
Public Works Director Leah.
Here.
Storm Lieutenant Curtis.
Here.
Deputy Waddell.
Here.
Treasurer Nadya.
Here.
Counselman Eager.
Here.
Counselman O'Gorman.
Here.
Counselman O'Neill.
Here.
Mayor Irvin.
Here.
Solicitor Bobby.
Here.
I'm sorry, not a firm.
Here.
Public Works Director Leah.
Here.
Storm Lieutenant Curtis.
Here.
Deputy Waddell.
Here.
Treasurer Nadya.
Here.
Treasurer Jane.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. To the motion approval of the agenda, do we have any items to add or remove from the consent agenda or regular agenda? Here we go. Do we have any amendments or changes to be proposed normally? Here we go. We will ask for a motion for the approval of the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Counselman Aderson makes the motion. Is there a second?
Oh, my goodness.
Counselman Martin, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Approved? Motion passes. To the citizens' comment, is there anyone here for citizens' comment? So, we move on to the mayor's report.
Thank you. July 20, open house in Woodland coming at Legacy Park for landmark home, presently keeping the city from the mayor's office. July 30, Brent's Drop fundraiser at the park sold out. August 6, downtown McCannsburg partnership community day at the park, food, music and fun for everybody. Washington Chicken Donuts were our big hit. 7th, assistant terms of the library cleanup with the new book sale center. We topped off the dumpster. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moving on to the consent agenda. Is there anything to approve the items on the consent agenda?
Salute.
Vice President Anthony Reeves, is there a second?
Okay, yes.
Counselman Aderson, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Consent agenda items are approved. Moving on to the regular agenda, finance administration ordinance, Mr. Eaton.
Session on plan to upgrade server and burnout equipment.
Secretary, how can I speak to this? This week, she had had meetings of third element to discuss and social input from the police as well on the server.
She included that on the paper.
And I was included in the paper.
Uh, Dave Sizer said that he would attend the first meeting in September, Councilman O'Neill would be more on the matter, yes sir?
Just can't hear it, I'm sorry.
Some people don't have to hear the type. Uh, Dave Sizer advised that he would be able to attend the first meeting in September, Councilman O'Neill, to talk with him more in depth on the matter. The memo stated that information on the server, it would be fully, to both be, the cheaper server would completely cover the cost to go five days with admin. And he did detail that that break 500 could be put off until the 20th.
So, another question for the police department, would we be willing to talk about going fully into the cloud at that particular point and getting away with the server, going with a smaller server?
Yeah, I talked to Dave Sizer personally and we had discussed that. The only reason we would need the server is for the in-car cameras, which we had discussed, I believe, not last meeting of the meeting before. So, that would be the only need for an in-house server at that point. I guess some grant cycles are coming out for possibly upgrades to camera systems and stuff. But it was the grants they're putting out recently that Josh Shapiro had announced. But the grants are competitive and they're only going to be, the police departments that can prove that they have violent crime and their violent crime rate is low solve rate, are going to get the grants first. So, while we put in for the grants, the chances of getting some of the monies are probably going to be low because you've got a pretty good police department here. Our crime rate is low and our solve rate are in the high crimes, the part one crimes these years we solve.
Do we have a quote to transition all those?
Can we do it? Off the top of my head, but we had talked about it, I think it was $200 per camera in the car and then it would be $50 per camera per month for the keeping of the cameras in a cloud basis and that too.
If council will approve that, would it be possible for us to go forward without acquiring the server?
I would say, based on the conversation I had with Dave, as far as the police department goes, yes, we wouldn't have a need for a server if we went that route. I don't know how quick we'd be able to do it and we would probably need something just in the interim until the stuff we do have on the server currently, when we decide we can just get rid of it. We can't just delete it, we'd have to hold on to it for retention purposes, so.
Lieutenant Curtis, when we talked about this previously, I think, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that there was a statement that the current server hasn't stopped working, that it might continue well enough to get us past this transition period. Is that correct?
That is correct. And I would assume without, not in computers, I mean, a police officer, that if we would switch to a different system, a jump into a cloud, not put as much wear and tear on that server, we're constant in and out. So, it possibly could just hold on to that for retention purposes then.
Until the transition's complete.
Until it's, yes, correct.
Okay. That makes sense. Any other questions regarding the server? I think we can move forward and have Dave Sizer attending personally and.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's on my agenda.
Do you have spoke to any outreach? Counselman, are you?
Yes, Attorney James and I met with the library folks, Sue Irwin and James A. Kirk, about two weeks, you know, a week and a half ago maybe. In regards to a grant that the facility that requires barrel endorsement and some work from us, that financial responsibilities, we understand that we're not on the hump for what they go after. But the grant setup, they need our cooperation, which we are pursuing that now. And the work that they're looking to do with his dad, my niece, at the new facility at the Agway building, to enhance that and make that more usable in the future. So, it was a good meeting. I think the session by the fans was a good meeting during.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. So, regarding the website project, those of you who were present last meeting, you saw what the prototype looked like on screen. We sort of submitted the site net to our contractor revise and we're working towards building now what we had given them and populated with the right information. And I don't have a timeframe, we hope to get some estimates soon on when that website will go live. Believe me, I want it to be soon rather than later, as probably many of you do here. And we're looking to tweak some of the information, information of the things that are valuable to our community, that are easily accessible and can be updated on a regular basis. I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Counselman, are you? You know anything on this development, Counselman Eager?
Very short report. The only that I have is the downtown McCannsburg partnership, which the mayor addressed, I think it's from there. And so, good event there. And then the McCannsburg Chamber of Commerce has begun looking very seriously into the railcar renovation and repairs, which is wonderful. It's made that this past week had very productive conversation. It's not going to be a quick fix, unfortunately, but it's going to be, I think, the right fix ultimately. And they're feeling very positively about it at the moment. Any questions on that topic? I think that's all I have.
Thank you. Moving on to your public works and safety, Counselman Cooper.
We've quite the agenda items here this evening, so all kind of handed over first to Penn State Health Lifeline, Ground Ambulance Service, or sorry, Penn State Health Lifeline through best here, through that's chief name.
Good evening, Mr. President, Mr. Vice President, Mr. Mayor, and the gentleman of the council. My name is Scott Easley, I'm the director of Penn State Health Lifeline. I'm here to talk to you tonight about our wishes to enter into a multi-year agreement with the borough to mineralize our EMS coverage that we provide to the borough. I need not tell you about the history of West Shore ALS and actually joining me tonight is also Mr. Dwayne Yovis, who's our operations manager, who can speak to any operational questions you might have and also any West Shore ALS history questions. West Shore ALS has served multiple municipalities in Cumberland County and Florida for many, many years. November 2021, the Holy Spirit Health System became part of the Penn State Health System when Dyson Health System divested their interest in this area. With that came the West Shore ALS, which is now part of the Penn State Health Lifeline program. The Lifeline program, there's two programs that are basically set up. There's the historical legacy program that is out of Hershey Medical Center, longstanding history, and there's lots of similarities between the existing life line program and West Shore ALS that we inherited. There is an independent LLC that was set up by Penn State Health to bring West Shore ALS under, as well as Lancaster County, especially in the valley, and that's became part of the Penn State Health family last year as well. This was done as an independent entity so that we could preserve the ambulance membership programs that West Shore ALS had had in place for many years. That is a longstanding staple in these municipalities, provide that ambulance membership for the citizens in Cumberland County and throughout many municipalities on the west shore. The footprint of Penn State Health Lifeline, West Shore encompasses the multiple municipalities within Cumberland County, we provided these service, support services to Perry County, services to ALS and BLS to northern York County, and also down in the Chambersburg area in Franklin County. And also, under our division of Lifeline is also our Lancaster operations as well. The reason that we're here tonight is kind of a multi-package that could be hearing throughout the union. Penn State Health would like that the borough consider entering into a contract with Penn State Health for EMS services. When we brought the Holy Spirit Health System into our health system, with that came any existing contracts that were held by Dyson Health were assigned to Penn State Health. In this case, we're talking EMS agreements. There were multiple service agreements written under Dyson Health, and remitting back to Holy Spirit Hospital when the EMS program, before Dyson was under the hospital, that were assigned to Penn State Health. There was never, to our knowledge, there was never any written agreements between borough and McCannsburg and Dyson Health System. At least, nothing was ever assigned to us. So, we've been providing the service without that agreement, that we had no issues at all. There was a seamless transfer, there was no disruption of the service, barring COVID and all the staffing challenges that everybody faced during that timeframe. But there was no disruption to the service. So, what we want to do is basically, we're looking to continue that service under a multi-agreement. We would like the borough to consider entering into a formal agreement with Penn State Health. The template that we provided to Mr. Royal and other members to review is basically the same template that we do for all the municipalities. Penn State Health is providing EMS services not only on the west shore in Lancaster County, but also Dolphin, Lebanon, and Berks County as well. We standardize our agreements with many of those municipalities. There are many municipalities that have, you know, signed that contract with us, so there's no differences. We are able to tweak the contracts to specific requirements by the municipalities, whether it be a financial contribution or if there's some municipalities provide us living quarters, whether it be in a municipal building or a firehouse or something like that, and then any other tweaks that we need to make for it, but they're pretty much all the same. There are other municipalities that we serve that, you know, go with the EMS coverage just through an ordinance or through a declaration of council, you know, that municipal government recognizing Penn State Health Lifeline as the EMS provider. And still, we have any municipalities who choose to do nothing, but we still provide that service regardless. What entering into a contract with Lifeline does with Penn State Health does is we're looking at a five-year agreement, which is our standard lease that we, that Penn State uses for most all of our agreements. What we're looking to do is mineralize that and continue to provide the service uninterrupted, no changes. And that also gives a little bit of security to not only the borough, but also Penn State Health Lifeline as the, recognized as the provider for the municipality. As we go forward, you'll hear tonight about the efforts to consolidate the EMS station into a potential new firehouse that we're working collaboratively to design and build. Our current station that we inherited right down the street here, came from old, and Dwayne can speak well of the history of High County, it came from the old McCannsburg ambulances. It was built back in the seventies, it was built for Cadillac ambulances. Penn State Health is looking to have to put a lot of money into that station, and even if we put a lot of money in that station, we're going to need a new roof, new HVAC system in the coming years. The ambulance is still unfit, there's very, very little tolerance getting through the doors, you know, mirror to door because the ambulance isn't that grown, so. So, you know, the idea of a new home and a collaborative public safety building is ideal for us, we would be looking to potentially rent space from the fire company for that. However, from the health system and us in university, what we are looking to do is just kind of, you know, mineralize this agreement and the service that we provide to the municipality so that if we were to enter into an agreement to live in this firehouse or a long-term agreement to rent space from them, that we would still be recognized as the EMS provider for the borough. So, just gives us some security that there won't be another ambulance service that would move in after we get into a long-term agreement to live in that firehouse. Now, obviously, you know, any type of rental agreements that we do, we go out clause and all that, but it just makes it so much easier for everybody and also just adds a little bit of security on everybody's behalf. So, that's what we're looking to do, is first step is to, you know, see if the borough would entertain that motion to, or request for a motion to mineralize that contract and we can move forward to what the, you know, with the fire company and the borough to potentially build a new firehouse public safety center. So, that's basically the crux of our request tonight. So, I'm willing to answer any questions you might have, any operational questions you have also we're willing to address and I would, you know, be more willing to have Dwayne come up and speak to this.
Before, any questions for Scott? If you want to provide from the borough and the fire department perspective, if you comment. Scott did a great job going through the history, so I won't deliver that, and you have a copy of this. The memorandum of understanding, a five-year ground ambulance service provider agreement provided to you will ensure that Penn State Health Lifeline is the ground ambulance service provider for the borough for the next five years. These agreements are common. In Cumberland County, Penn State Health Lifeline provides basic life support, advanced life support, or vote for the following municipalities. As you can see in the copy that you have, of the areas that are fully covered, McCannsburg is the only one that does not have an agreement with Penn State Health Lifeline. Penn State Health Lifeline provides service to multiple municipalities in several other counties, as Scott mentioned already. In total, they provide EMS for 64 individual municipalities. The Mechanicsburg Volunteer Fire Department strongly recommends that the borough review and approve the memorandum of understanding and ground ambulance service provider agreement. The fire department believes this agreement will ensure that the borough has a primary provider for services within the, for emergency services, emergency medical services within the borough, which is important. It also holds Penn State Health accountable to keep ambulance staffed and ready for service. These two items benefit residents of the borough to ensure that EMS service is widely available when needed. This agreement will benefit the fire department and the birthway. Mechanicsburg Volunteer Fire Department is in open discussions with Penn State Health Lifeline about providing space in the new fire department to them. This agreement is one of the primary remaining points of discussion on moving forward in that process. Having a agreement and MU approved and having Penn State Health Lifeline located at the new building will provide a revenue stream to the MDFD to assist with mortgage and operation costs. The MU will also be a positive influence for the USDA loaning approval, the MDFD is being. The migration of Penn State Health Lifeline to the new location with the McCannsburg Volunteer Fire Department will better protect both fire and EMS providers from the health and safety aspect, providing plenty of continuation rooms, bathing shower areas, apparatus engineering areas, secure storage and storage rooms, and on-site training. Overall, the agreement and MU provide an overall value to residents by enhancing the location and visibility of fire and EMS services. The borough's fire and EMS providers being located at the same building will allow the new fire department to serve, the new fire department building to serve as a central meeting place to facilitate public safety-related events and training. Further collaboration and cooperation between the fire department and EMS would enhance communication between those entities and further improve the already strong working relationship between first responders in the borough that builds on the great work that the police department does with both fire department and EMS. Finally, this agreement is being taken while tax monies have worked successfully. I will add, from a financial standpoint, that McCannsburg is one of the few local municipalities in the eastern half of Cumberland County that does not provide financial support to our local EMS. Two municipalities, Kingston and Lower Allen, have their own EMS and have spent approximately $1 million each on EMS services according to budget figures researched in 2021. One major municipality, Silver Spring, paid $100,000 to private EMS companies according to budgetary figures also researched in 2021. Scott, no to township contributed $83,500 in 2020, according to documents on the website, and even the small Dinkin Township provided $7,575 to one ambulance company, Cumberland Good Wealth. And they also have Yellow Bridges EMS located close to them and providing services as well. Now, Holly Springs, a municipality that is much smaller than this one, provided $15,000 to Yellow Bridges EMS. And a full breakdown of eastern Cumberland County municipalities to new contributions to local EMS is provided in here, in there, of course. Now, if there are any questions that you have for Scott, for Dwayne, myself, then me here, from the Mechanicsburg Volunteer Fire Department, and also Randy Ury, any questions that you would have and can currently address to any of the five of us?
Thank you, Chief O'Donnell. Does the council have any questions?
Counselor attorney, do you agree?
I think he's in the process of doing that, and he declared a conflict of interest he doesn't represent Penn State Health, so we did wave, at my direction, we did wave that conflict of interest in this case because it was, it wasn't really standard, so, and there are other attorneys that, the borough may represent, they have other attorneys, we have Penn State that also represent them, so. But it's my understanding he was in the process of doing that, he'll have that prepared for us at the next.
And if I may add that too, as far as his representation of Penn State Health, Penn State Health, our legal department does outsource some things to a third-party law firm. In this case, the EMS agreement, as you noted, is standard, it's our standard agreement we use with all the municipalities, and it would go through our primary attorneys who are employed by the health system, so. We're not, again, using that standard agreement, barring there's no radical changes, we're not interested in any issues or delays with that.
Do we know if there's been a historical perspective on this, has this been passed with council before, or is this the first time it seems?
I vaguely remember reviewing an agreement like that in attachment, meaning it wasn't necessarily.
It was a donation.
Oh, exactly, okay.
It was actually a donation, it wasn't, I don't know, it was an agreement that he filled with services.
Gotcha.
The first time in my, it's been my memory that touched, but this is the.
In a year and a half of Penn State Health, this is the first time we've come before you now. When we were doing the transition of Dyson, you know, West Shore into Penn State Health, all of the municipalities were sent copies of the templates or to, of this contract, or to at least ask them to agree to assign any existing Dyson agreements to us. Again, that we were not aware of any that was in place with Mechanicsburg part of this, so I can't speak to it. If Dyson came before you, you were represented from Dyson or Holy Spirit, but this is my first time here.
So, looking at the municipalities that have signed agreements with you like Hampton, what is the relationship there with Hampton who also has their own EMS?
In the case of Hampton Township, their EMS that they own and operate is a basic life support service, and we provide the advanced life support service to the township, and we have a paramedic squad that's based out of their station, so. And the agreement with township is, I think there's a very small amount that we pay for rent, but it's a reduced rate in exchange for the EMS service, so that's their financial contribution for the ALS service.
Could you clarify that a little bit, please? What is their contribution?
I don't know off the top of my head. We do have a small rent that we pay to Hampton Township for the space that we occupy, but it's greatly reduced as part of the township's contribution for advanced life support to offset any of our costs. All of the EMS, we do primary billing of any patients that we transport, and then a lot, what you're seeing more and more is asking the municipalities to help subsidize EMS for any of the losses. EMS is a huge loss leader, we also lose a, you know, fair amount for our own health system, but it's a service that's provided to the community. So, in this case, Hampton helps offset some of that loss by reducing the rent for us.
Was any kind of debt through recognition?
Yes, yes.
So, how do municipalities arrive at their contribution, their financial contributions?
That's all over the place. So, with bringing West Shore in, we've kind of inherited everything, we've inherited as it is, okay? So, what we're doing is we're trying to work going forward to standardize this, you know, going forward under Penn State Health. We have some municipalities that were in Dyson that will pay us a certain stipend per call, and there's also a certain penalty that we would pay for any missed calls in the township. There are other municipalities that we work with, not on the west shore, but over in Cumberland, or I'm sorry, Dolphin and Lebanon County, where we assess a, agree upon small per capita fee based on the population of the municipality for EMS service. There are some municipalities that just make a randomized donation per year based on anything they can, and there are some municipalities that pay us nothing, so. Every municipality is treated equally, however, municipalities that we have, larger municipalities that we have agreements with, there's more of a consistent coverage of service. The smaller municipalities that really don't contribute anything are usually small response volumes, so there's no, if you have a small, not an ambulance, but if you have a municipality that has maybe a 200 call a year, or 200 a year call volume, there's no dedicated ambulance base in that municipality versus another municipality that has a, you know, 10,000 call per year, where there'd be multiple ambulances based in there, so. But it's kind of all over the place, we are working towards that. And Penn State Health, we've kind of accepted what's, what we've been able to get for the years, for the years, and we're just starting now to work with all the municipalities going forward, to, you know, say that in the future, you know, we're not going to come back and say, hey, we need a million dollars, but, you know, till we have conversations with you about those, you know, per capita ideas or call, pay per call. The pay per call, we're trying to steer away from because it can be an accounting nightmare and you're also relying on the call volume reports that are coming from the counties. Now, all the counties have the capability of giving us good call volume data as far as what's missed, they can tell us when the calls are handled, they can't tell us what we missed, so that's a hand count, so. We're, you know, our model on Penn State Health is either more towards the per capita fee or some type of agreement per year in kind, or if there's other municipalities that provide us, let's say like a place to stay, you know, there's, you know, they're providing us a place to stay rent-free in exchange for their contribution for EMS service. So, it's a long answer, and so we're just kind of all over the place. You're also hearing down in Lancaster County, there's some EMS agencies that are starting the concept of a municipal authority. Great idea, totally foreign in Pennsylvania, but it's slowly catching on, so that's something else you may see here in the future, so. If I may just, Counselman O'Neill, I know you're familiar with this, so historically, to my knowledge, we have never received a municipal contribution from a municipality where we service the paramedic service. So, they have a BLS, a basic life support ambulance, they're supporting or not, you know, would be really none of our business, but whether it's, you know, Hamden, Silver Spring Township, whomever, maybe Monroe, they serve by Yellow Breaches, by Silver Spring, by us, because it's kind of in the middle of all those towns, as far as reach. So, we've never had that contribution, which is sort of ironic because that's really the big loss for us, where we, you know, really have little opportunity for reimbursement or a much lesser opportunity. EMS, it runs around Medicare, which is low amount insurance, and it's still stuck very much in the 60s, 70s, and it's all based on transportation, not the care provided and all the capital funded to make that care possible. So, what that makes different for Mechanicsburg boroughs like Upper Allen, like Royal Mooseburg, Lemoine, now Camp Hill, all of these six or seven northern York municipalities will both services. So, those are the ones essentially where we've been accustomed to seeing some sort of contribution. And I believe your recollection is right, in the past, we've had, you know, occasional $5,000 donation, it was never even recurring, it was a year here, a year there, a few times, as far as from Mechanicsburg, but really for the ALS only, it's never something we anticipate, we certainly left, generally, except that we know they're supporting their local ambulance, their local providers, Mr. Royal detailed there.
Chief, what would be, if you were similar to our seat, what would be your general recommendation? recommendation that you're responsible to citizens to have some outflow of cash coming through? How would you help us discern that? Because obviously you're other than gets.
Yeah, yeah. That's a great question, you know, and largely we touched on this some, we operated with no agreement, it was a gentleman's agreement, this thing got started by the West Shore Chamber in nineteen eighty-five. You know, so for many, many years, it was little more than a gentleman's agreement for us to work hand in hand with all the basic life support ambulances. Really then, when Mechanicsburg Community Ambulance merged into us, at the same time that the Upper Allen Township Run Ambulance merged into us, and the Wormsburg Volunteer Fire Department did, so that was a big deal in January of nineteen ninety-four. So basically, since, to go along with something like that, I would say we'd be happy to meet with you and share other battles like Mr. Wardle has shared with you, we're trying to get away from the pay per performance because it is a nightmare. It's very difficult to track. We put more man-hours into tracking that than we probably see in game, and it's just, it's really not good. So we have, we have a bunch of municipalities who do something like that, the Northern York and Upper Allen do that, and we've already started discussions with both of them, all the Northern York municipalities and Upper Allen Township. It's too late to do anything for twenty twenty-three, let's get together in January of twenty-four, or twenty-three for twenty twenty-four, and let's talk about, I can show you three or four years' history of what the invoices have been. You know, the pay per, the stipend per call we handled, and the penalty we sustained for a missed call, and we can show you that, and maybe you can convert it to per capita or however you would like to do it. You know, and then we could do an annual contribution, put an annual escalator on it, whatever you would like to do. Certainly, anything would be a positive, but we are in entirely new territory since two thousand and twenty, in personnel retention, recruitment and retention, it's a whole new world, and everything would be helpful. So we'd be glad to discuss that and share generalities and arrive at something that would be palatable for you all, but, you know, again, largely we did it on, or we did it on nothing for here, forever, and a lot of times it was just a municipal resolution that really carried no weight, it was a, you know, it went through the formality and that was the extent of it. And if I may add one comment to what Duane mentioned also, is that Penn State Health, what we wanted to do also is basically, for lack of a way to prove ourselves to the municipalities, we've been, the LLC has been in existence now for a year and a half, and when we notified everybody that all your, you know, EMS was switching to the Penn State Health, there was some apprehension about, you know, is the service going to change, are they going to decrease coverage, you know, what's happening? So we, and that's kind of standard model that we've done with all the municipalities as we've acquired services, is, you know, give us some time to prove ourselves, and in the past year, you know, I think we've done well despite the challenges with COVID and staffing and everything else, but that's the reason too, now we're starting to have these conversations with municipalities and the. And I can reassure you that all this stuff was thirty-two years for me, I've been here the whole time, the parent keeps changing around me, we're still doing what we always did. Duane has a great past collection.
A couple of good questions.
Sure.
We started back, I think, when I was president of the chamber with a five thousand dollar stipend for Jubilee Day, are they still donating to you?
I don't know what it is, I don't believe it was that much for, in recent years, but I think there's, we were just asked this year, was there something and what was it? And I, but I don't believe it was anywhere near that. And the reason I say that is because when I was in the role of assistant chief and really setting up all those resources over a course of four and a half years, at least all those Jubilee Days that occurred in there, are just our labor around the day, not even set up, tear down, just our labor for the day was over six thousand dollars, and I want to say it was fifteen hundred from the chamber with what was agreed upon, but I may be wrong, it's just, but it was, our labor was not as close as five thousand, yeah, yeah. So we were around about sixty-five hundred to sixty-seven hundred in labor, but that's, you're talking two thousand in two thousand twelve there, and I haven't, I haven't tracked that in a while.
So this is a two-part conversation, right? We're talking about the agreement, which I'm in full support of, we just need to get it run through our attorney and have him put that into place as far as I'm concerned. The conversation about money, I think, is something that we need to really kind of mull over and get that.
Yeah, and we understand that completely, so, absolutely.
What is the call volume?
I do not have the numbers with me, but that, but that's another point, is that is something we can provide to you monthly, you know, as far as a part of a public safety report, however you would like it. For example, last Wednesday night was the Upper Allen Township Public Safety Committee meeting, so it's a couple commissioners, the police chief, their, their local EMC, their fire marshal, and our representative. So usually Assistant Chief Kevin Dalgiers goes, sometimes I'll attend in place of him if he has another commitment, but, because he runs the Cumberland County operation. But, so they have a public safety meeting every other month, I believe, you know, and that's where we provide the data to them. But we can do whatever you would like, provide monthly data by mail, electronically, whatever.
I'm just curious, I think that helps clarify, you know, a lot of stuff. Then my next question is, you know, the goal would be to be in the beautiful new firehouse. So then are you looking at an agreement that involves both space and then the fee from us? Is it separate, is it together?
Separate, I believe, yeah, because our arrangement there would be for fire departments, our understanding, so, and certainly we're asking for a longer-term agreement to help solidify us as the borough's designated provider of emergency medical.
Yeah, and so is the five-year agreement that you've actually been drawn up?
Yeah, Penn State, the normal for our agreement is just five years. We can do longer agreements. Quite honestly, the university tries to shy away from those when possible, so, but a one-year agreement is a hassle for everybody because we're coming back every six months to talk about it and renew it, so. And they are evergreen contracts, so as long as there's no written notice or there's any radical changes, it just automatically renews, so, and again, that's what we've done with all our municipalities, so.
Can I ask one more technical question?
Absolutely.
The intention of the institute that we don't, with the fire folks, they do mutual aid, do you have mutual aid as well?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're answering calls in the surrounding municipality?
You would be surprised, yes.
They're answering calls in our municipality when you all do this.
Exactly, yeah, so you'll see the Hampden Township ambulance in Mechanicsburg Borough, and likewise, you'll see a Penn State Health Lifeline LLC ambulance in Hampden Township and everywhere else. I just told a story that one day, a few years ago, the Camp Hill Fire Department, when it was their ambulance, went to Franklin Township, York County. I mean, it's just, that's reality, you know, and we call it the Great West Shore Shuffle when it happens, but, you know, everything hits its wants, and that's what, that's what you end up doing, so. Yeah, we gotta call through the Phenomenal Road Center, we don't refuse calls. For instance, Lemoine, we spend a lot of time in Harrisburg City from our Lemoine location, so.
I'm grateful for you guys being here to answer questions, I'm sure be grateful for Mr. Wardle's report, it was great to have him.
Yeah, it was very nice, you did a lot of work on that, and you got a lot of great points. And just want to be inclusive to your question about the type of the agreement and what we're looking for, so we would love to solidify the service agreement as soon as possible, and then we're happy to have conversations about any financial contributions down the road, so that's usually amenable to the agreement, and we've done that with other municipalities as well, so I just want to reassure you that nothing adds ordinary with that request, so.
I have a few questions to take here, so. So this is just, I'm just one of those guys that lets it happen, so thank you very much in advance. How does it determine where an ambulance goes once a patient is received?
Yeah, so you, your does need handles that, so the box card assignments at Cumberland County nine oh one, that's all pre-established, that pecking order is established, so I don't know if it's Chief Neff or who you have that does that, that's how that's established. So as an example, when Chief Adams was still in Upper Allen Township, at public safety meetings, he said one day, there's no reason the fire department should be setting EMS responses, here we have, this is our provider, you know, we have them on a pay-for-performance system, you know, the chief should be the one, so the Commissioner's Council for that is Cumberland County that says I can go and make changes in Upper Allen Township. Camp Hill just did the same thing, Lemoine and Wormsburg gets the fire chief or, you know, whatever position that is, whoever the borough, the boroughs together designate to make those changes, okay?
I might be a little confused, so bear with me.
Yeah.
So when a patient is picked up and going to be transported to a hospital, the hospital that the B L S unit transfers to is based on the system you just explained?
No, no, that's dispatch, that's who responds to the call. The hospital choice is entirely, the rule number one is patient choice.
Okay.
So, because it would be a great disservice to take someone who's gone to Pinnacle for their entire life and has a host of medical problems, to take them to a Penn State Health or a Wellspan or some other facility, that just adds time and inconvenience to obtaining their medical records and getting them the care they need. The only caveat to that is sometimes people will request a hospital that we know is not in their best interest for their current condition, so we will strongly recommend, to the point, sometimes we get a medical command physician on the phone or the radio and put them in direct touch with the patient to have them help explain to them, it is not appropriate, you know, that you want to go to this small community hospital, I know it's still miles from your home and you've gone there your whole life, but we can't do that in good conscience because you need to go to a tertiary care facility where you can get the heart care or stroke care or trauma care that you need.
Okay. The next question has to do with call volume, and Councilman Agar had hit on this, I think we don't have those figures. When those figures are provided, I'm going to shoot the two of them.
Absolutely.
I think most of us would.
Yeah.
It would be helpful to see the call volume of the surrounding municipalities as well to give us a sense of perspective.
Yeah.
Is the borough especially high user of EMS?
I can't even speak off the cuff, I mean, I have so much that I'm responsible for, I can't do that, but I would gladly give that to you, that's something we do for other municipalities, and it's largely our relationship view has been, in nineteen ninety-four, we replaced the Mechanicsburg Community Ambulance, you're happy with this here, we're doing the service, and we never really exchange anything, so I realize this opens a whole new level of communication, and more than happy to share that with you monthly.
Thank you very much for that. Coverage, coverage is based on, so placement of your units and coverage, if you will, is that based on the number of calls or demand for service, or is it based on the dollars received through service?
It's based on the area we cover and as far as what resources we have there, we look at time of day of the week and time of day data to determine peak hours. It's kind of odd to have this conversation because sadly, we haven't had a peak hours unit in Cumberland County in two years because we just don't have the staff to do it. Now, we were in a deep hole, we're clawing out of that hole, we're recruiting and retaining two or three people for everyone that we're losing now where it was the reverse, you know, in twenty twenty, centered around COVID and so forth. So that's tough to say, but that's something we look at every six months, is basically the minimum, to look at time, day of the week, an hour of the day dispatches, and then, so I'll give you an example, so typically, if staffing were not an issue, we would have a twenty-four seven staff-based life support ambulance in the Mechanicsburg station. Then Monday through Saturday, we would have a nine AM to nine PM because that's where that extra volume is out of, you know, what our data shows. Sundays are pretty slow, so we don't need the personnel on those Sundays, we don't need the double coverage. In Upper Allen, which is continuous with the borough, we would have a twenty-four seven M I Q, a mobile intensive care unit, which is a paramedic and an E M T on ambulance, and also a nine AM to nine PM, but that's seven days' peak hours unit. So that's what the latest data had shown. I haven't looked at it because we've been too busy with recruitment and retention to even worry about it because we don't have the resources to put on the road. But that's something, if we get back to a staffing level that advocates that, that we're going to do that again, and look at all that data and put the resources where we, where we need them to be.
So it's fair to say it's based on service demand?
Yeah, service demand, and there's a calculation called unit hour utilization, and it's a nationwide industry, and it's, you know, there's a, there's a below average utilization where, you know, you're spending a lot of money on resources and manpower for very little calls, there's that sweet spot of average, and then there's that above average and worse, where you're burning out providers and you're not going to be able to retain personnel because it's just too busy, and you're going to miss calls because you don't have the right number of resources on the road at the right time of day on the right days.
Okay. Next question, we're more on the business side, just a couple of them. I think I heard you say that A M, A M S and B L S is a loss leader, is that, did I hear you correctly?
EMS as a whole is a loss leader, yes, not just for our health system, but for any EMS agency, and a perfect example is if you were having a heart attack and you are a Medicare patient. If somebody is having a heart attack, okay, if somebody is having a heart attack and they have Medicare, and we show up, we provide, you know, the advanced life support care, heart monitor, IV medications and so forth, take them to the hospital, on average, that's about a two thousand dollar bill. Medicare will reimburse us four hundred dollars, we eat the rest.
How much would it cost to reimburse you?
Um.
A little bit more.
A little bit more, yes. Okay, I was just saying, yeah, a little bit, a little bit more, I was, yeah, I really have a quick connect, no, I don't know, but, no, but, I mean, insurance companies as well, they have negotiatorage, now, dealing with the health system, we are fortunate that, you know, when they're negotiating rights with, you know, Highmark, for example, they can negotiate a higher rate for EMS as opposed to like a Silver Spring Township that just doesn't have that leverage, but nonetheless, the, you know, no EMS is covering their costs.
Can I ask a question about ambulance membership? Does that help out that cost and people do that?
It does, we're allowed to, we're still allowed to bill the insurance for any revenue that we are entitled to, and then the membership will help write off any copays or deductibles that a resident might have, yeah.
And how much is the membership?
They vary by municipality, they're averaging about seventy-five or ninety dollars depending on the municipality, you know, and we, and we also have some joint memberships with some of the B L S services, like Hampton Township, for example, so they'll do, we'll do a joint membership and we'll split it, so. And the added caveat to that is, you know, if you're a member with our organization, if you happen to be in Lemoine, Wormsburg, Chambersburg, you know, anywhere else, you're going to be covered by that membership if you need your services, so. Rather than just the roll numbers for that ambulance thing, many years ago, we sat down and really looked at our total, our fully loaded cost per call, everything, wages, benefits, you know, the equipment, fuel, insurance, everything, and every time a unit clears the threshold of the bay door for a Medicare patient, which are seventy percent to seventy-two percent of our patients, every time we clear that threshold, we operate at a loss. Our revenue recuperation is less than our cost for that unit of service.
So I have no, I have no difficulty believing that. The question I have, I have another follow-up, is your ALS loses more than your B L S does that, right?
Yes, we, the B L S, we're allowed to bill for the actual ride to the hospital.
Right.
So a B L S, there's different models to this, so if we are providing the ALS to the B L S, so what we call a M I Q, so our ambulance shows up with a paramedic and E M T, that person having a heart attack, we transport them in our ambulance, we will get a, barring Medicare, we will get a higher reimbursement rate.
Right.
Versus what we would get for, let's say, working with some of the B L S agencies in Perry County.
Right, it's transport model.
Exactly, exactly, so they can go the mileage and the transport, we can go a very small fee for the ALS, so. Our ALS, it's a, it's a service that's needed by the community, we lose money on that, but the ultimate is that it's still the health system's job to provide this to the municipalities or to the community.
So seeing that the EMS is a loss leader, help me understand, the traditional definition for me with a loss leader, right, is that an organization is giving something that lower than reimbursed their lower cost order to gain dollars in another service that more to offset the original loss? So where is the gain?
We are part of a large health system, so our being by loss leader, you know, loss leader within our health system, but again, many EMS agencies have shown, and that's why they're not around anymore. But I'm just, I can just highlight Penn State Health, surgical services makes a lot of money, neurosurgery makes a lot of money, cardiovascular services makes a lot of money, OB-GYN, there's money in delivering babies, you know, some family and community medicine not well reimbursed, EMS obviously not well reimbursed, so there's this spread across the spectrum of services, service lines that are well reimbursed versus loss leaders like ours.
So the loss leader is feeding the more profitable service?
Well, and, and, yeah, yeah, and non-emergently moving patients to empty beds for patients who are in need of those services, so, discharges, et cetera, so that's where our value to the health system comes in, they know that they need us to move those patients, either discharges from the Penn State Health facility or movement from one facility to another where for care that they need that is not available at their original facility.
Okay. High level, not, you know, the high level, most of the revenue is coming from what, the patient pay, third-party membership, what's your, what?
Patient billing, yeah.
Patient billing, yep, to third-party.
Yes.
Okay, good. And then I think, there's two more questions, I'm done. Why, why ask for a service agreement?
The service maybe has, it's twofold, like I said, as I said earlier, the first thing it does is it kind of memorializes and solidifies the agreement between the municipality and Penn State Health.
I understand.
So, so, you know, we ask our municipalities just to embark on, like, so there's some who don't want to be bothered by it, but especially a lot of municipalities, we like to have that agreement with them, okay? It's a goodwill gesture. So, the other reason that we're looking to do this is because of the joint venture that we're embarking with the fire company on, is that if Penn State Health is going to commit to, you know, renting space from this fire company and being a partner in this, that the, you know, borough will recognize us as EMS provider and, you know, we won't worry about, I mean, you can always get out of the agreement, but we don't have to worry about another ambulance setting up shop in the borough next week.
So even, if I may, even with the municipality, even if the borough did not So even, if I may, even if, even with the municipality, even if the borough did not pay anything, uh, did not offer any financial compensation, you still have patient pay, you still have third-party pay, you still have memberships. You'd still be feeding more profitable, uh, operations within the same health system. So those things are still things to be interested, you just don't want a competitor moving and ours moving to somebody else and the convenience of those dollars and those transports, okay?
Keep, keeping in mind that largely throughout the West Shore, historically, uh, about fifty-five percent of patients went to Holy Spirit.
Understood.
So there's, there's U P M T, there, there was Penn State Hershey before, our affiliation with them, et cetera. So again, largely patient-driven, but also specialty care needed.
Yes, I understand. Last quick question. Thank you so much, by the way, for being very annoying and it's a lot to think about, uh, with many factors. The current ambulance quarters, which many years ago, I actually joined randomly until somebody, one night at China Hospital, opened their eyes and saw me in a jumpsuit and said, oh my God, we undertake this duty, Jeffy. So I could, we should have EMS services. Uh, but who owns that ambulance quarters?
Uh, Penn State Health does, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we did a thorough deed, uh, review of it, uh, during the acquisition and, and Dave DeLuce, who is one of the authorities for the health system, who handles our, uh, real estate, uh, transactions, did a secondary deed, uh, review of it. Uh, and it was transferred from Dyson, our ownership was transferred from Dyson here to Penn State Health.
Okay, so that is a negotiating point as well, I assume. You, do you know what you're going to do with that when you invade that facility?
Anything that, uh, we would do with that building, it would, it would be sold and then the proceeds would go back into the health system to offset the cost of the acquisition of Holy Spirit.
Okay, thank you gentlemen so much, thank you, Council.
All right, uh, sure. Um, thank you very much for, uh, presentation. It seems like we kind of have a better intention, but we, we both agree with the agreement pending, um.
Support on next month, yeah.
All righty, uh, so that moves us on to our next one, presentation from Evercore and possible action on street sweeping contracts through December forty-first, twenty-eight.
Uh, good evening and thank you for having us. Uh, my name is Patrick Keane, I'm the president of Evercore Facility Management. This is Laura Matthews, she's our senior account manager for this, uh, this region. Our company is a facility maintenance provider by nature. Uh, we, we provide snow removal services, lawn and landscape maintenance, uh, pest control, construction, and what we're here to talk about tonight, which is road and street sweeping. So, uh, all of those verticals fall under one umbrella and, uh, the way our model is set up is where somebody like Laura is the person, she's a one point of contact for all those different services. Excuse me, I have a little, uh, a little something in my throat here. So, uh, uh, again, we're here to talk about, uh, street sweeping. We gave you guys some bids on it over the last, what, six months or so? And, uh, you know, we're just here to answer any questions. We don't have a formal presentation or anything, just to give you a little background on our company. Uh, we were started in nineteen ninety-five when I was, uh, thirteen years old and my brother was fifteen. We started out as two people and now we have a hundred and fifty full-time employees and just shy of six hundred shooting employees. And, uh, we have offices all over Eastern Pennsylvania, uh, a couple right here in the central area. And, uh, that's basically the gist of it. We're, you know, we're just here to talk about and answer any questions on our proposal.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Those are French diesel fuel bidding.
Oh, we stopped looking.
Well, I'm actually serious.
I actually don't know. I haven't, I haven't looked, but, uh, it's, it's a problem. It's a, it's a real problem right now, sort of industry.
In your proposal, um, and thank you very much for it, it does have a fuel surcharge clause. Um, so I'm wondering what you're doing in regard to any listed accounting question? What you're doing in regard to the fuel surcharge on a contract subject?
So basically, anything over three dollars a gallon, we are billing a percentage of the fuel to the client. And that's in the proposal, uh, the percentage, as I deleted, was four percent, right? Right. So four percent of whatever we bill you, we would charge you in the form of a fuel surcharge. And that's only if, uh, diesel fuel is over four dollars a gallon, which it is. And it probably will remain that way for a period of time.
So, I'm sorry, four percent of our hourly rate?
Yeah, so whatever we invoice you for, it's, it's going to come out to around four additional percent. And believe me, we don't want to charge that. We're hoping, if it is three ninety-nine, we would love to not charge that anymore.
We would too.
I'm sure.
So regardless of how, I apologize if, I want to make sure I understand, no matter what the price of diesel fuel goes to over four bucks, you're charging us four percent on top of our, the rate that you give us?
Yeah, that's, that's a really good question. We struggled with how to make that. We didn't want it to be a sliding scale because we didn't want it to get out of control. So we decided that this is what we're going to charge and, you know, if we get to four oh one, we're going to charge it. If we get to six ninety-nine, it should be the same amount, it's not going to matter.
Where are we seeing that four percent rate in this particular proposal? Am I missing that?
It's in a clause, it just says if it's over four dollars, we're, you know, basically, we're, we have the authority to charge the fuel surcharge. It's in an email that it's the four percent.
Well, it's not in the agreement, but the four percent?
Correct, yeah.
Cannot be added to?
Absolutely.
Sure.
Yeah, diesel fuel is at five, but we're going to do a little work right now.
Yeah. I knew it was over five. And just to give you a little more background on our sweeping division, so our sweeping division consists of thirty trucks essentially, plus or minus a couple, depending on what's getting worked on and what's being added to our fleet. Uh, our sweeping division is a very efficient division. It has its own dedicated general manager, it has its own, its own team, its own facility, its own maintenance department. We have onboard mechanics, so in the event that you have a breakdown, we're immediately calling them out. If we're here and we have a breakdown, your, your clock stops as soon as that truck stops. And you are not getting billed until that truck is up and running again. So, uh, and we're very timely when it comes to that. We, uh, our goal is to make sure that our fleet is always running. Uh, our fleet is, is some, some trucks are eight or ten years old and some are eight months old, brand, brand new fleet. So, uh, and we're making substantial investments in technology. Uh, our fleet Dow is beginning to remember and actually they're creating artificial intelligence that allows these trucks to know the street that it's on and what street and setting we want it on and we can record that and we can, it'll remember that. So if, if we're on Main Street here and we may have a different, uh, boom pattern, once we do it once or twice and we get it to be, we can remember that, it makes us more efficient, it leaves less trails, it's just an overall better operation.
One of the biggest challenges that you face in municipalities such as ours that will slow down the operation and therefore cost us more?
Yeah, another great question. It is one hundred percent people illegally parking. And if you're not enforcing it, you're not going to get a good job. I'm going to tell you that right now. A lot of municipalities we work with, they are heavily enforcing this with substantial fines and giving people one warning and that's it. And then it's several hundred dollars and, you know, non-negotiations, doesn't matter, just you pay the fine.
So that brings me to a great question, because I love street sweeping, I'm going to go further. Um, I, I just, we talk about schedules, so, uh, I think the hourly rate, are we talking about developing a schedule? That so we can enforce it?
We would have to, yeah, we would absolutely want to work with, uh, your street department and potentially your police department to, uh, to work together on that. And, you know, obviously signage is important, but the signage is only good if it's being enforced.
Yeah, because we currently have fines, that's my biggest complaint. We haven't enforced it for a long time. Um, and when we've been street sweeping, what, two years ago? Year ago, I don't know, a while, a long ago. But the problem was is that there were a lot of vehicles that had it moved, so enforcement wasn't happening. Uh, that just, we could see the trails around the car, so it wasn't efficient.
Yeah, that, that, you know, I was talking personally, that looks worse when, when those streets are there. And I can tell you, we have municipalities that the police officers riding with us initially to ensure that those cars, and that message gets sent real fast to people that people are being ticketed. Again, you give them one warning and then it tickets and people get the message real quick.
I, I know, because I was.
As far as enforcement goes, we, we enforce whenever the street sweeping is done on the schedule, it was on signs. So if you sleep during the time that's on there, we'll enforce it, we'll give ones, they get tickets.
Oh, very.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, none, none of them would stop, uh, enforcement is because of the fact that the street sweeping isn't occurring at the times that are on signs.
So we, we would work very closely to make sure that those timeframes are realistic and we would make sure that, you know, we can. Our goal is you have a four-hour minimum here, so we want to fill your four hours. We don't want to sleep for two hours and charge you for four. We don't want to do that. So although it's beneficial to us, it's not efficient and, and it's not good for a longer, a long-term relationship.
And you could look at our sign enforcement currently and give an estimate as to if that worked and if you'd be able to fill that four hours free.
Yeah, a bit of it could be trial and error and trying it out and getting out there. You know, it's, it's probably going to take three months of sweeping until we get a really good handle on, you know, how much we can get done, how quickly, how efficient we could be, what streets are more problematic for people to be parked there. But yes, we would absolutely work with the police department and, and the public works to, to establish that.
And then for the police department, I know eight years past, like maybe a week or two before the street sweeping commenced, we got a next little warning, but that'd be something that we could do to remind people. Because it will be new if we start doing it again.
Absolutely, and hardly occurred, uh, from the police park aspect, just to go out prior to starting, um, which is usually April first to September first, it's going to be summer state. So we would have to go out two weeks beforehand, basically just put the warnings on there and then, you know, however it is from there.
Couple of quick things, you just said, I think, uh, three months.
What's that?
It would take you three months to kind of get into a group, and the reason I'm asking is.
Possibly quicker, but I like to, I like to set the bar low and then, you know.
Absolutely, yeah. The reason I'm asking is in your, in your proposed contract, it states under performance thirty days.
Yeah, that's our standard language and certainly within thirty days, we're going to have a pretty good handle on it. But, I mean, you certainly, we ask for within thirty days, you will allow us substantial latitude. After thirty days, then you're able to, like, really put pressure on us. But again, in this case, it's just, it's, it's different. That language is being used for dozens and dozens of services and this sweeping alone, it's out of our control if these people are going to be parked there.
Well, the part that I understand is this consistent levels of several inputs and justice, et cetera, et cetera. Thirty days, I heard you say three months, that's a, that was significantly different.
But that was.
To expect.
Yeah, that was, what I meant by that is when we will have a really good handle on not only, you know, how efficient we could be, how many hours it'll take, but it's more importantly, how we're going to work around the, the vehicles and not leave a, not leave that trail.
Okay, next thing, under hiring period, the non-hiring period in your contract, I'm fine with all that. You certainly do put a lot of investment to be protected there, plus subcontractors. I would, I would want to ensure that this is not covering subcontractors. So if you hire another company to come and fill in for you and we decide to leave your service and go to another, I don't want us restricted from doing that.
Yeah, we, we don't use subcontractors, so, uh, for sweeping, so for us, that would not be an issue. Now, we own a couple of different sweeping companies, so you may not see Evercore on the truck, you may see stay on the sweeping, but that's our company, Evercore employees. It's just, uh, if we buy a company, sometimes we just use their branding for a short period of time.
So it doesn't necessarily do their business, but it says service providers, which to me says subcontractors.
It, it's again, we're applying standard language.
So we could change that?
Sure.
Okay, that'd be awesome. And then I know your willingness for it, how far is your worth?
Well, so you'd be coming out of our Cookstown branch and we, we determine that's about an hour, hour and ten minutes.
Wow, one way.
One way.
So that means the two hours and twenty minutes of our four hours is just your traveling here and back. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Well, the four hours is the minimum. So if you, if you, if we have four, four hours of work, you'd pay us for six hours and twenty minutes potentially.
Which really speaks to our schedule because we would want the vehicle to be on site as long as possible so that we have a much lower percentage of travel time versus actual sweeping.
Right, we would much rather get four, four, we want to get six, seven, eight hours ideally. But again, that's going to be a work in progress to get that till we, till we get a really good rhythm.
Totally understand, thank you again. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right, um, so I, I, that would lead us to, um, potentially adding it to the next meeting's agenda.
I mean, as long as there's, there's that, this agenda for action and Council would like to take action on it tonight. Um, keep in mind, for the enforcement zone, we have that in place September tenth. Other than that, we're outside of our enforcement capability in terms of Main Street and stuff. And that's also just for a relatively small section of the borough. So most of the borough does not have signed street, sweeping parking spaces.
So I guess my question is, if we acted to engage in this, we would have to look at, because we only have the reality of getting upset before, what, September first, would that, would that, probably not, right?
Oh, no, we'd be able to start it before then.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I would think, again, you're not going to, you're going to get one or two sleeps in if that, I mean, really. But you're, but we would be able to come here before then, more than likely.
Okay, how, how late in the year can you sweep? I mean, can, could we extend or is the lease date getting, I mean?
You, you should extend it. Most, most are into October.
Okay.
Especially with stormwater regulations and how important that's becoming now. When does it start? Do you want to?
It will, I'm not.
Yeah, so that's reasonable. So that's reasonable, but that, i- if you're going to make these signs, you're going to put some time to this and we're going to work together to, you know, get a really good program in place, there may be some costs that you might want to put into in updating somebody's rulings and things like that. Because you're going to, you're just going to get a better job.
And the police department's saying, when I don't know that I would be comfortable taking people, even if we haven't before a street sweeping in maybe two years. Um, that if they start the street sweeping, we would not notice for this, so like a couple of weeks.
But could we do an education on?
I think they're doing educational, so this is your, this is a warning there.
And could we, um, do like some kind of tax, um, like do you have the capability of just alerting the neighbors, uh, about the street sweepers coming and it would be time for them to move?
General, um, there's, there's a very big complexity here and maybe it's best, uh, wrote down a little bit today and then, and brought back in two weeks. Uh, you've got enforcement questions, you've got notification of reckless questions, you've got areas, uh, of, in the, within the borough, actual areas for, so sweeping, um, seasonality of the street sweeping, uh, and you've also got.
Well, would it be possible, and really this is a sort of a question, to approve the contract contingent on some sort of, um, scoping committee approval that would come up with a schedule, um, and outline at least for this year, the enforcement?
I think we agree that we need the sweeping, yeah, yeah.
Yes, well, the good thing is if you're not going to enforce it for this year anyway, you could sweep beyond September, you're just not going to be able to write tickets, so, which you weren't going to do anyway potentially. So that you don't really have that short window that you, you think you might, you just might not get that perfect of a job. And I can tell you, the most efficient way that I see street sweeping ordinance happen is where one side of the street on one day is closed and the other side is open. That is where you will get the best results, where people don't have to park two blocks away. They just have to park on the opposite side of the street. But again, it can invest some signage and, and some logistical challenges, but that would be the, what you want your long-term motive.
Since, since I'm checking the direction that we're moving, I'm going to ask a little question.
Sure.
There are three different, uh, three different pieces of evidence listed in your proposal. Right, are they all coming in the same order?
Yes.
Okay, so we also have, uh, the number of hours the sweeper is going to be active in the borough to be considered to maximize the benefit. I understand very well how important this issue is. I personally have been very disciplined that street sweeping has been active. However, to have them come and drive down the traffic lane of the roads for a couple of weeks and then disappear, I don't know that I understand that. It seems like we need this to be well considered standard and planned. It can be done quickly probably, if you're loyal, Council as such. Um, or whether we can just have them come and drive around four hundred cars and.
And CSB that would get signed up and.
Although we're not going to be able to, as far as before the end of the.
Right, how, do you want to, do you want to sign the entire borough? I mean, that's.
We can, we can, we can make or operate.
It's just a two-part, is that we have them drive and get an idea of what mechanic is like. Like, I don't know during the average day, how much traffic or parking, uh, since COVID has, you know, gone the other direction, how the streets look for parking. I know for a while, you can get it out.
Well, there are always stages in the Mechanicsburg, Mechanicsburg has an abundance of free parking. It's just in certain blocks, certain blocks get full more than other. It's just in certain blocks, certain blocks get full more than other blocks do. So we're gonna run this basically for, I'm sorry, six hours, seven hours of, of a run?
Ideally.
Ideally.
Right.
If we're running basically for a full workday, which makes sense, then I don't think we have to pay any attention to the signage because we're not informed and, and no one knows it's coming and we're not asking people to move. But we're not going to get the efficacy of the service. We are going to, we're gonna be having a visual.
No, and I think the efficacy of the service would be starting in the spring, with April, so education, enforcement, and making sure that we have it on the scooter bills and on best neighborhood chat that people like. I think that's, there's probably a, a good compromise to do a couple of sweeps this fall and then start sweeping regularly with enforcement, starting in the spring.
In this contract, we have it till the end of the year. So we're not, we're not obligated to pass that, but we would try to work with this, you know, to see if it does work.
Mm-hmm.
For next year.
Yeah, and we see the likelihood of it and if it does, it does well. And there are plenty of streets that don't have, uh, street parking issues like that, ours, among it.
We also have the will of the people, right? They want the sweeping to happen. And so we could use other means of communication to get the word out, but we're gonna be on your website.
I think they're more.
Facebook is very powerful. If you use Facebook to get that message out for sweeping, do a lot of that.
So I would rather make a motion, uh, if you were prepared to hear it. So I would move that we accept with conditions the contract that's been presented to us. Um, that the vendor will remove the language for service providers in the non-hiring clause, that we attempt to do a minimum of six hours, uh, per sweep for a trip. Um, that we not enforce the parking until a proper notice can be given to residents. And by proper notice, I mean a minimum of thirty, probably sixty days. And then the four percent steel search art could be added to the contract language, if you wouldn't mind. So certification and art training, I'm sure we'll be happy to achieve that level of specificity. And I'm missing anything.
Like I said, I think there should be sub, also subject to a de, to a de-scoping meeting and approval of the solicitor and the, uh, public works director prior to the ratification of the contract.
And I will add that to my motion, please.
All set?
Did you catch that, Chairman?
Sure.
Uh, we're gonna make a contingent on solicitors reviewing approval on a community or local.
Yeah, like a de-scoping, we, we had, we've done this before, it's also done in, in engineering contracts where, you know, a meeting where we come together with the company to set the parameters. And if we can't come to anything, then we can't sign the contract. But if we can come to determine as to how it's going to work and the schedule, uh, and the enforcement, then we can move forward.
And for the public works director's approval, reviewing their approval. And Mr. Anthony, I think, seconded.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
One last thing, I just wanted to say, with our company, you, you'll get free of charge our time to work with your people. So we can take in, you know, December, January, February and really work through some plans and you're not paying us anything for that. So we're happy to be involved and, and work with the, uh, between the police and the public works and help create a plan that's gonna, that's gonna work here. Because we want to be your vendor for a long time. We want the streets to be clean. We don't want, you know, residents saying, oh, well, you know, Evercore missed my spot, you know, but we couldn't get it. So, so we're gonna work really hard to make the program successful at no additional cost.
Thank you. You're really good. Thank you for being here, yeah.
Of course, it's our pleasure. Thanks for having us.
So everyone comfortable with that? All right? One favor.
I.
Please both. First.
Oh, I'm convinced.
Councilman Burrows, first, please. First, your pass.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
All right, so that moves us on to our next agenda item, uh, action on the police park version, full implementation of let, let's equal policy service and a veritable subscription fee for the twenty twenty two not, uh, twenty, for fee for twenty twenty two not exceed two thousand seven hundred ninety nine dollars and ninety cents. Um, a one-time implementation fee not to exceed eleven thousand nine hundred thirty nine dollars in ten terms and an annual subscription for twenty twenty three not to exceed eight thousand three hundred ninety nine dollars and seventy cents. So I will, um, assess any motions.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I hear a motion in a second. All in favor?
You can, that's for discussion.
Right, you're all.
He is the baby crack.
Motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second for, uh, any further discussion? One favor.
Hi.
For both, first your passes.
All right, next, uh, I am, uh, action on the municipal service agreement for maintenance of traffic control signals with Atlantic Transportation Systems Incorporated.
Um, we had two quotes, was Atlantic Transportation Systems Incorporated the recommendation of the sheet?
Um, I don't know if I have them.
It was, uh, signal services and Atlantic Transportation Systems.
Uh, was, I believe when I read through, it was one, it was dating some employees from Perks made from Westchester. Was it?
Yeah, one of them was from Westchester.
I think Atlantic was.
Atlantic Transportation Systems located in Campbell.
Yeah.
And.
Signal was west.
Signal was westchester.
Okay, then, yeah, um, without looking at those, I don't have them printed out, so I did look at the packet. I don't have a sheet and that in there is the two, I think it was the second one. It was dating some of the Perks employees, um, and it, I, it was cheaper than the two of them.
All right, I want to show you that she mentioned to me that signal services were one that was dating the, the Perks employees.
Signal Service took all week to get the third element to open that, so that's probably my fault. I thought they were the only one we had when I saw the. That was like a Friday, I, uh, third element had to, you know, get their PDF to open for some reason.
Okay, okay. All right, so there are two options and, um, signal services in the packet adds the other option. So did council, council have any other suggestions as to which?
Is the maintenance, uh, traffic control signals currently being done by a different company or?
It was, it's currently being done by Perks, which has gone out of business.
Ah, okay.
Which is why we need to select a company to go with, at least in the short term for emergency service calls.
Yeah, they're out of service like we did today or this, the end of this week.
So I read through both of them and I found it difficult to figure out. I didn't feel like I was comparing apples to apples. Um, it seemed like signal was much, much cheaper. Um, and I don't think I quite could understand why they were cheaper and why it may just wasn't more expensive. Were we getting more from Atlantic or? Also, there seemed to be a lot of add-on fees for signal. So although it did seem to be cheaper when you first read it, it did seem like there was some addition, there was add-ons a lot, so.
And I think it was a two-year contract, so.
Yep, it's a two-year contract.
Do we have any idea what we are paying for Perks to do it?
I think we spent around nine thousand dollars with Perks this year so far. Treasure James, we don't have a number on that for us. And in the past, though, we have spent significantly more depending on the emergencies calls every time, yeah.
Lieutenant Perez was there, but I'm not sure who the department is in charge of this area. Is that?
So normally, it's the borough manager that deals with contracted services with, uh, the signal stuff. Police department doesn't normally get offered. My chain of chief was, um, given, uh, is to get the quotes. And then obviously, during that time, I did read through the, the quotes and installed over them. So I kind of shared myself a little bit, I stayed printed out. Um, I'm not sure what the difference was in the fees. Uh, there, there was a significant difference between the two. And, um, the breakdown seemed to be, the one seemed to be more in depth and had a lot more breakdown. So it didn't look like there was a lot more add-ons, but in my opinion, it's kind of just more breaking down exactly what you're getting, what your bank or your book is, whereas the other one is just more, this is the fee and that's it.
Well, the chief did reach out to me and ask me for, if she would get, you know, if I would give her the go-ahead to, to get those quotes. And I did, I did do that, so that's why we have them in the packet. Um, I know that she had also known about the situation and we were, we were also kind of simultaneously working on.
Kind of, yeah, we communicated, but that kind of stopped because of self-town and she was wrapping up, I'm sure, a lot of things. She left, but I did say to her, you know, go ahead and run with it, obviously, since she was willing to, um. I'm trying to bring it up to look at the comparison. Uh, it looks like a lot of people are going with APS. So I don't know what their staffing situation is, you know? Do they have enough people? What if there's a big outage in then, in East Penn who is using them and they can't come to us for, we have more, you know, well, not quite anymore, but, and it looks like somebody here also, uh, it might have been Fairview Township, maybe someone else, uh, signed like a short-term agreement with APS, like maybe we do a four-month or something. Looks like a two-month here, maybe a four, obviously get to the end of the year. And then other places, um, appear to be planning to go off or bid, but I mean, unfortunately, I haven't exactly, I have not reviewed the information that was included in the agenda packet, so I don't have any, uh.
Possibly for this suggestion, we could, uh, approve it with a modification that we go with a provider for a couple of months. So they pick acceptable, acceptable to them and then go out to bid, so that we have more of an apples-to-apples comparison of what the, the bids are, you know, what the proposers are saying. Because I do, I also found it confusing as to how to compare them, it was a little difficult, so.
And the new man, a new manager might have much experience with this situation and might have, uh, might be opinionated on it one way or another also, so hopefully if we fall within the time period, but it sure hopefully. Timing works out and everything might fall into place, you know, so that we can make a decision and have the person who may be dealing with it the most, the manager, you know, be a big part of the decision, but.
Do you think APS will be willing to modify the agreement for, for willing to stay? Because this is for a one-year contract.
Fairview right here, I definitely, like, Don Martin, manager of Fairview Township, signed a two-month deal with APS to cover until we can advertise bid and award a multi-year contract.
There you go.
I, I felt comfortable with that.
So through the end of the year.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Then we have to make a decision then.
We should make a decision that since we have no coverage right now, there's an emergency.
Yeah, they were down to like two people anyhow.
Yeah, they, they do have coverage, which is, it's a long call, kind of thing. I'm not sure how long a provider would have you, uh, to speak to, uh, CH's, you know, Perks was kind of pretty much the, when I first started, they were the ones that did the entire area. So if you have large outages, a lot of times larger outages could be, be the health issue.
So I would feel comfortable making a motion for a two-month, um, agreement.
For which?
I think for, for the end of the year. For APS, I would assume.
So four months agreement?
Four months. Four.
Right, to finish up the year.
Yeah. I'd be, oh, yeah, I guess it's not, I'd like going to have it. So, yeah, a four-month agreement, gosh, I wish it was, um, and then go out to bid, because there, there is an agreement with that.
Did progressive council agree or have any other preferences to which service company? Was there a second?
Should, should it be, um, uh, worded like the remainder of the twenty twenty two?
Yeah.
So it's like that we'd be using the local, the more local group.
I think. So I'd like to say till, till the end of the calendar year, file thirty-one, twenty-two.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Agartha and a second from Councilman O'Neil. Any further discussion? Here we go. All in favor?
Aye.
Any offense? Motion passes.
And then we have our last agenda item, um, on action on the purchase of a line.
Public Works Director, CH, where?
Unfortunately, no one has gotten back with a price. Prices vary a lot and we do get a significant discount. So like, let's say something's listed for seventeen thousand dollars, we might be able to get it for twelve, twelve to fourteen. But what I'm looking at, the possibility, so the long and the short is the machine with the nineteen ninety-seven model, wow, it was purchased in nineteen ninety-seven, the thing that is sitting down in the garage, went through oil testing and then when paint went into it, it clogged up, stopped. So it needs like probably hundreds of more dollars of repair, which isn't much when you're comparing that to thousands. So there's still the option of having the machine that we already own, uh, repaired. But a new sweeping machine, um, so they basically come with one or two guns. I don't know if you've ever seen a paint gun or anything like that, it's pretty simple. There are the airless type and the, uh, well, the type that uses compressed air. The best for our purposes will be the airless, so it's mechanically driven by a pump system. And they are gas-powered, which is exactly what the unit we have down here is. And we would want a two-gun system, one that we would remain, we would have, allow to remain fixed once calibrated, so that it's doing our preferred size line, which is six inches with minimum for crosswalks. And then we would have a one that you would, you know, see somebody like on Home and Garden painting walls and, oh, I paint this all room in ten minutes, you know, that type thing for stenciling purposes. So it looks like, uh, from what I, information I was able to acquire, so far, we're somewhere between seventy-five hundred dollars and seventeen thousand dollars. We have around eighty-five hundred dollars specifically remaining that was intended to purchase another piece of equipment that, still, it may be a possibility for this year. That would be the tar line crack ceiling unit used, there are thirty-three thousand new. So we're looking at a used unit for now. But I think for moving forward, I think we definitely want to get a machine, understand how the machine operates and performs and do the proper maintenance on the machine instead of parking it for twenty years and, you know, here we are. So unfortunately, I don't have anything that I can present to you to say, uh, that's a great idea, let's do it. I might get the email in the morning. We're dealing with a company in Harrisburg who is a professional pavement and seal coating company. So they are well versed in these machines and as soon as I get something, I will order it. But the crews are out, doing it on hand for now. We may do stenciling with a different, like a more stationary unit that we can mount either in the truck or just, you know, have go around the truck. Doesn't necessarily have to be like these things are three-wheel units that, I don't know if you've ever seen, but come down to the garage and check it out sometime, but anyway, uh, so we can definitely do that. And we can do that quickly, uh, you can purchase something like that for a couple hundred bucks. And it could be, you know, air or airless and we could just, because when we reply that way, it's gonna, like we talked about before, drive more quickly and be more efficient for allowing traffic to pass through the area. That's all I have.
Perfect world, what would be your season for, in my opinion?
I think as soon as, as soon as school's out. I already have it on the calendars for next year to start immediately. Because I think, uh, I don't even know the guy's last name, Danny. Whoever Danny was, I don't know if anyone knows Danny, he used to work for highway department. He was the guy who did all that. I don't know why he was the only guy, but, you know.
Dan Hendrix.
Thank you.
There, there is one thing to be done now, correct?
Correct.
And do I misunderstand, I thought I heard you say a couple hundred dollars to fix the machine that we currently have?
I'm not sure what that might entail, the cost, because I, I'm not even sure exactly what is wrong with the machine at this moment.
So is the couple hundred dollars just kind of a?
It could be for hoses and the pump teams to be working, which would be the most expensive part. It could be for hoses and the pump tubes to be working, which would be the most expensive part, which we would probably just.
Right.
Shell, I mean, the carcass.
How fast could that machine be repaired?
Uh, I'm not sure it would have to do with the time allotment for troubleshooting, you know, and finding out what is wrong. Or if it's just hoses, like I have, you know, small parts, nozzles, that, that stuff's easy, you can get that anywhere, like Amazon, you can get it. That's quicker, I don't know if it'd be quicker at this point than even showing them around to the paint stores. Um, so hoses, I'm not sure exactly how much they run, a hundred bucks.
I mean, is there a place that we could take this machine and ask them to overhaul it, get it running and?
Um, I probably won't take it back to the general who did this, the one of the repairs which was claiming it out, getting it running and, yes, certainly, okay, when we're testing it, we're using water and slash mixture of paint thinner. That worked perfectly, I had, you know, I was like really happy, I lost, I think it was. And in the afternoon went to, you know, make the next step for final testing, found the shop with paint and it just didn't go well, but so to speak, completely, you know. Fat in my face, but.
It's got a pump issue, doesn't it?
It, it seems like, um, it may be a pump issue and like you said, if it is a pump issue, then probably wouldn't be worth repairing. But, uh, there's, there could be, um, I think there are shipper groups that I am planning on speaking to when I can get time to call them to see if they can do a major overhaul or. They're, they're, they're familiar with these specific units, you know. The thing that we have is, uh, is not manufactured anymore, so that could be another issue.
Doesn't sound like, uh, you would be able to track for a issue.
So what I'm hearing though is that, uh, get some prices on some units and present them to us at the next council meeting so we can, I get a better idea. I tell you, it's kind of hard to take action on.
Yeah, I agree. I think the best, best back here to, um, continue to get information, um, and actually make a decision about whether we want to purchase a car buggy or the name line stripe of this year and then budget for next year for either order.
Okay.
Whatever we don't purchase or repair this year.
Yeah, it might have to do with availability too. Uh, somebody used that, you know, on, so Goto, this is huge company, they got the market corner, not the baby stuff, but paint spray stuff, might be a same company actually, but anyhow. Uh, if you get deep into their website before you find distributors, uh, some of the stuff is like, you know, not available ever, we have no clue. Some, that's actually the major stuff though. So things will be, I think it could be, some of it appears to be available September, some of it December twenty twenty-two, so.
If there is, uh, if this isn't the typical season for line painting?
I think this is the end, the wrap-up of it.
The wrap-up of it, would it be possible to check with another municipality to see if it's been?
Yes, I have a note here about that, um, excuse me. So I did speak with a couple surrounding, they are still in use, but they are wrapping up, may become available in, you know, sooner than later so that we can at least do something with that to finish up the process. Obviously you noticed, uh, yeah, I, uh, I was blinded down near my house when I saw the, some of it, you know, cause we're doing both colors now. Um, yellow following up where the white has started, which kind of makes sense. I did talk to some rental companies, Shun Bell is the only one I found local, well, anywhere that even had the option for a line shopping unit. And the person who spoke with said it was sold before and they were gonna check around and never called back.
Will the three-wheeled unit assist you, a new three-wheeled unit for several hundred dollars as you said?
I'm sorry, what?
It's okay, you said that the three-wheeled units are relatively expensive?
Uh, no, when I was talking about something to use for stenciling.
Oh, I see.
I was referring to like something to buy off the shelf at Lowe's or at Children Williams.
I misunderstood.
Something, yeah, that would not necessarily be a mobile, a mobile.
Okay.
Uh, and I have communicated and I had looked on Penn Duff's website a lot, but Greg Radoski backed me up and said, yes, okay. As you see, uh, the white and crosswalks, uh, they're supposed to be reflective, um, they're not. One of the older, uh, team members down here said, oh yeah, one year we applied that. So I have purchased some, it should be in and, and we will apply it once we get it to whatever we're doing. So that the proper, you know, it's anti-slip and reflective property, so that, that should be, then we should probably do it that way for now. Uh, but yeah, I think that's it. Does anyone have any more questions?
Thank you, sounds like this course of action is to develop a plan and how we might proceed and then go up again next week.
Ben, is it for, um, our committee?
Thank you. Rodney Parks and Recreation Councilman Hart.
Yeah, so, um, I have some representatives from the Shetree Commission who would like to come up and talk to us about the planting of trees, a hundred and ten trees.
Yeah.
Does that sound awesome?
And you have to, you just have a table with you.
Okay.
About a hundred fifteen trees?
Tough route.
I don't know, you can see this or not, you guys should have a, a small version of this?
Yeah, we have, we have P D F.
Okay. All right, my name is Dowd Agarson, I'm the lady chair and I'm the Shetree Committee. The Shetree Commission is going to plant three, a hundred and ten trees in Lamaro and Cozer Park. Replacing the trees that have been, uh, removed over the years due to aging condition in conjunction with the Keystone Ten Million Tree Program. Our goal is to create a visual barrier between the buildings on the northwest and southwest side of the park and the railroad tracks running along the south, uh, of the park utilizing groves and lines of native trees and bushes. We'll plant some additional trees around the parking lot on the northwest side of the park and we can also replace it, uh, tru-, four or five trees in the, um, and new trees in Cozer Park. The Shetree, the Keystone Ten Million Trees Partnership from Pennsylvania and their partners have planted over four million trees in Pennsylvania. They're going to provide a hundred and ten eastern U S, uh, native trees for our goal in delivering them on nine-ninth of this year. The Keystone, uh, Ten Million Trees Partnership will provide the protective tubes, tubes and stakes and workloads for us also, no charge. We've also hired a local landscaping company called, sorry about that, uh, Green Gardener Designs, they're based in Mechanicsburg and they're gonna work with volunteers to plant the trees and create a mulch bed around each and every tree on nine-ten. The Shetree Commission and community volunteers will install the protective tubes and around the trees and stakes. We will also water and routine the new trees until they go dormant for the winter. And then next thing, they shouldn't require any additional, uh, watering or anything like that. That's all I have.
You need volunteers?
We'll take all the volunteers we can get.
How much do you make a dollar a volunteer?
Um, the, the cost of the trees are completely free, all the, all the materials are also free and the delivery is free.
I have to get him off to the finish program.
I was at a park in, um, outside of Philadelphia and I was taking a ri-, a walk through there and, uh, the guy that was in charge of the park was there with some boy scouts that were, uh, making a new trail and planting trees and stuff. And I said, you know, I said, where'd you get all these trees from? And he says, Keystone Ten Million Trees, and they did it all for free. So all we had to do is provide the labor to plant them.
I, I know that, that the rec board is probably ecstatic, but the loss of so many trees over the last year, so it's gonna be a phenomenal event.
Great project and I was wondering if there are leftover trees, is there a plan?
There, we will, first of all, for all the volunteers, if we have enough leftover trees, we will, um, we will give one of the trees to the volunteers.
But I have a few, um, someone just mentioned to me today that there may be a few spots on Main Street that have an empty square that may need a tree, but.
Yeah, we have not looked at that, you know, that stuff, yeah.
It's just, just, um, try.
What species of tree is that?
What species, okay, we have, um.
They're all native.
Yes, they're native.
They're all native, we have white oaks, we have. Sugar maple, shagbert, history, hickory, um, service berries and red buds.
So before we plant any down Main Street, would it be a good idea to make sure that the root system is not gonna create a lot of havoc with the sidewalk?
Yeah. All, all the trees that we have are, are each one of different sizes.
And the company that's helping is very well-versed in?
Yes, they'll take trees all the time.
Unfortunately, we tend to forget non-native, um, trees that won't be outlawed, I think in twenty-three, those smelly trees. And brush hair, brush hair, those disgusting trees.
Unfortunately, we can't tell people to cut down their trees to replace them with native.
So when they outlaw brush hairs, can we help out? They're so smelly, are you laughing?
Um, I see there was a dot on the, uh, the field. Is that, is that inside the stadium fencing?
A dot. Now, we do realize there's a sinkhole at the central part of the south part of the park and we'll figure on that, okay? Totally right now, we came up with a total of ninety-three trees that we can plant in there. We had to order a hundred and ten to get them for free and they'd be delivered for free.
That's true.
Appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
It's like the, the best that the Shetree Commission's done in like three hundred years, so we, we're really appreciative of that.
Thank you.
I know, yeah, there you go.
Thank you, sir.
That's all I have for the property and rectory.
So we need to make an approval or recommendation?
Um, so, I, I, I've heard the borough ordinance, uh, it's, they can act as a, as an advisory panel with Borough Council on matters of having environmental impact on the borough, including but not limited to subdivision and redevelopment, park development or improvement side of ten, if they are recommending the planting of a hundred and ten trees, that has to be a hundred and ten trees. So motion that we, we can motion that the Borough.
How are we to just accept the, your recommendation?
Yes, that's just.
Second?
Second.
Vice President Anthony, seconds? Any, any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any thoughts? On to the person up here, Chairman Agarson.
I do not need to report.
Moving on to citizens comment, next citizen, all right.
What's, uh, for, what's for retreat? Uh, one thing, uh, comment element is if you guys did the catch and weren't, you see sleeping, which I've been up here for a couple of months now, complaining about it. But there was two questions I have not, would not ask that company over here. First one is how many municipalities they have under the belt and can they supply the municipalities with, uh, proof and recommendations from those, from those municipalities and their workmanship? Second question, how are they gonna sleep in the lease season when the lease are halfway out in, out in the, in the street? I think, uh, form can go with that, how, especially down here to Crest when you pile leaves up, up to the waist and almost halfway out to a s-, uh, street. How are they gonna sleep street seven? No one considered that. Hey, like Bob said, they're gonna sleep in the middle of the street, why bother? That's how your dirt's at, your dirt is in the curbs. And that's the reason the sewer plane is having so much problems in their storm sewers and all this debris for the last two years has gone down into the storm sewers and been crawling them up. There might be some consideration looking at a lease season, do you want them running during lease season? If you don't want them running through lease season, it's not worth them coming down here and you guys are paying them from the time they leave the port to they get back. So you guys are wasting, uh, an hour, you guys are wasting at least two and a half hours per day, over ten hours a week for these people to come down here. You're paying for that, you're paying for that mileage and hours. Might be something to consider, having them, if you want them, have them base something closer to the tanks, thank you.
Any other citizens comment? Anything, do you have any other visions?
Uh, Simpson Public Library Book Sale Center has a grand opening Friday nineteenth, six o'clock, between six and seven. And also the Polybase Saturday is their first book sale in their new building.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Um, I just wanted to say again, thank you to the public books for starting the painting and by hand, you're like artists.
Well, that's what we've been doing, unfortunately I thought we could change it, but I think we will soon enough.
Yeah.
Jordan, twenty-second, century twenty-first. Nothing, I have none. Thank you, I just wanna make a one quick announcement that Vice President Anthony and Inter Manager James had breakfast this morning with the chair and vice chair of Service for Intention and Borough Manager. And it was a great discussion, both sides were very pleased with the outcome of that breakfast meeting. And we plan to meet again in four weeks to talk about how we can continue to work together and share resources and partner with our neighboring municipality. And on a similar note, Vice President Anthony and myself and Inter Manager James had breakfast this morning with the chair and vice chair of Service for Intention and Borough Manager.